There now. Thanks again, Dorothy Harvey, Secretary, and on behalf of the members of the Catarroge's Let's Travel Club. That's nice. So I wanted to share that. Has anybody talked with anybody else in regards to Let's Travel Club or senior systems?
No, I'm still waiting to see on the dinner. I heard he came back on the dinner. They want to do the open house with the Senator.
Right.
That's what I heard.
Did we get anything by from grades by chance for?
The renewal? No.
No.
I just wrote myself a note to check with Hannah on the renewal insurance for the budget work meeting.
Okay. Animals? Library?
Um, they were closed last week for renovations. Overmacked up today. They got new carpet put in. Yeah, it's carpet's been there for like thirty some years. They got their carpet, um, Ed that was in here, President. Um, definitely just time to build a new, uh, hub, I guess you call it, but that's been a metal, so it rearranged a little bit. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Check it out sometime.
Okay. Mr. Friends?
When you were talking about the the bus question, is there a listing of the uses of the bus? Has there been a specific accounting from the school about how it was used or where the pickups were? Does that exist?
No, they, I believe they just sent the invoice with the miles and the rate.
The board might choose to ask the school for some specificity there in order to look into it and make sure, because it does seem incredibly odd that the cost would go up if hopefully mileage did go down. And the point that Mr. Pritchard made is very valid about questioning why it's doing door-to-door pickup if past practice was to do a group spot. I think that should be looked into, whether the village had it in writing somewhere either with Stacy and her agreement that granted her. I would be a little surprised if that's there, but would be worth looking into. If not, then there's probably a supervision question that needs to be addressed there. Uh, the shared services agreement is a blank, I'm sorry, it's a form. It doesn't have specificity. It does seem to cover certain instances like an indemnification of whether or not workers are causing harm or negligence and whether there's damage to equipment that's being shared. Those are the things that I would be most concerned about. I think the board should direct some person to negotiate with the state as to exactly what gets filled in on it, though, to make sure that's taken care of. But I don't have specific concerns about this. No, it's not bad.
So I'd imagine that. I don't figure the state would probably let, because they had to equip. They would probably come in and do the work and.
Yeah.
Like, that's what I mean, yeah.
That's gotta work for the state to back hold, right?
Kind of the same way, you know, like, come in and.
Yeah.
Looking for somebody with it.
Come on, you do. Yeah?
I'm gonna say no.
So then, the way it's written though, I mean, do you foresee it being an issue then? Go ahead and.
No, the two things that I would have been most concerned about I saw are generally addressed in there. Obviously, you can, lawyers can get into pissing matches where they want to include four and five pages instead of one paragraph for a couple of the provisions in there. And if the board really wants that, happy to do it, but it does cover those at least in a basic way. The the two things, if somebody's using your equipment and the equipment breaks, they have to pay to fix it. If other people are being supervised and they cause negligent acts, they're going to have to pay for it. Or if the villages of the employees are negligent, the village has to pay for it. Those are the provisions you would expect and want to see in a shared services agreement.
So then it would be sufficient then to go ahead and go over that then?
Yeah, if the board wants to list somebody to negotiate to fill in whatever the the final points are in there, yeah.
All right.
I'll take it.
Word stating, or statement, right?
Okay, so word made the motion?
Do I have a second?
That's it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it's carried and approved, four zero. Jason abstained.
Just want to indicate fully what that motion is.
To go ahead and sign, for the mayor to sign a intermunicipal agreement with New York State Department of Transportation.
Well, what, John?
You're gonna need to fill in the blanks. You have to get the blanks filled in first. Who's filling in the blanks?
Uh, would that be John then?
You've probably picked John. I think that makes the most sense, but that's your choice.
Is John just able to sign the whole thing at the end?
Probably not. It would have to be whoever the board grants authority to sign it. They probably would be the mayor.
So John, you get to fill that in? And then for permission, I guess, for myself, then to sign it?
Um, actually, at the bottom for the municipality, it says highway superintendent.
So then to give John all authority then to sign that?
It may say that on the agreement. If you want to do it that way, great, but I'd probably advise that you want. You can do it with the superintendent, but understand that if the superintendent's gonna be exercising certain authorities or spending funds or using equipment in a way that's damaging, that that's on their path. They should have the authority granted then if they're given any kind of discretion.
Okay, so then.
It's my motion. I say you both have to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both of them? Okay.
So that's what, all right, so it's the motion then is for John to fill it out and sign it, and then for myself to sign it.
Okay.
Word made the motion.
I second it.
Oh, seconded. Do we need to do the whole, all in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Name?
Put down one for the rest of them.
Stacey, Jason's abstaining. It's carried and approved, four zero. Okay. Next. Anything else, Mr. Friends?
Did you want to discuss the collective bargaining agreement discussions?
Yes, I would. So.
Do you, um, need to agree anymore for you?
Uh, you have FEMA funds. You're still working on that, right? Okay. What do we have for war terminations?
Uh, Jason wanted to bring that up.
Okay, that's right. So no, then you're all set, sir. You have a good evening, John. You deserve it.
Thanks, John.
So wait for Jason to come back then.
Okay.
It's gotta be a first to matter.
Don't get too excited. Still early. Night is young.
The night is young. All right, so this past week, um, was it Jeff, uh?
CM.
Came down, um, met with the guys and Rick, you were there?
Yes.
Um, discussing a, the upcoming bargaining agreement for the guys upcoming. If you'd mind over there?
We asked the guys what they wanted and to see what what their concerns were and that. And, uh, and talked to Jeff. He said that this is pretty much standard what other communities are are doing and gave us a guideline on that. Basically, I think it was the clothing allowance. It's like, really, like, a ten dollar increase per year. The telephones would stay as they were, which I think was ten dollars a paid period the guys pay. The, uh, he said that the typical pay increases for most communities is between the two and four percent range. Craig had a concern that he was coming up on his tenth anniversary, but he wouldn't get his vacation pay or vacation until the eleventh year. He's supposed to get an extra week. That was a concern. And, uh, pretty, pretty fast when they had about twenty-five minute. He was gonna put together a proposal for us, uh, for us to review and, uh.
When it comes to collective bargaining agreements, this particular one expires in May of this year. They usually do last for five years. It is at the discretion of the municipality to the extent that they want to choose to negotiate and hammer on the on the union when they do this. The agreement that was proposed from the union to the village is, in nearly every respect, identical to the current collective bargaining agreement the village already has. The board and the mayor can choose as to whether or not they're comfortable with the current collective bargaining agreement or if they want to see changes to that. And the, there are negotiators available for hammering out different terms if the board has concerns about what's in the agreement or if they've had concerns about how it operates. It's an opportunity to express policy preferences of the board if they wanted to as well. Now, there were some questions earlier in the year about acceptable use policies for the cell phones of employees, their activities while they're on the job. Those are all things that can be incorporated by reference into a collective bargaining agreement if the board so chooses when it binds the village for the next five years with the union. And so those are things that you could consider to discuss or explore if you wanted to. The the changes, as I said, are as conservative as you can get. There were exactly three changes. The title page was changed to reflect that it's gonna be the next five years instead of the past. The clothing allowance goes up by ten dollars a year from two hundred to two-ten to two-twenty to two-thirty. And the third change was the pay for the employees, and it's listed in the contract as going up three percent a year. Because the village is binding itself to a specific amount of raise and the village doesn't get to control whatever the property tax cap is from the state when that comes down, nor does the village get to control what inflation is, there's some risk there. The village could try to be more savvy and put in something like, we're going to increase employee pay by the same amount as whatever the village gets from the state finance department and the state controllers when they give us the percentage each year for core inflation increase in New York. Or you could do something strange like peg it to an inflation target from the Fed or something, but you're gonna see pushback from the union on it. You can choose to try and go that route if you want. There is some risk, though, when you say, we're giving the employees three percent. We don't care what the economy does. We don't care what the state tells us. Just note there's options out there for that, and that represents a small risk, but three percent is relatively conservative.
I know where I work, the clothing allowance is sixty-five dollars a year. The boot allowance is a hundred dollars a year. You're allowed to carry it over one year to have two hundred. If you don't use it, you'll lose it after the second year. Our contracts vary. I think this last one was five, but usually I think they're four, maybe three. Usually. Five is a pretty long time to have to worry about a contract.
They don't worry about five.
I don't, I can go get it.
Yeah, I don't.
I can go get it.
The previous contract, the one that's currently in effect, is a five-year contract.
No, it's not. I, I took the contract. It was three-year contract.
Right. I can go.
Twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen.
Thirteen to sixteen. It is possible I misread that portion of it, and the board can't choose not to do it for four, five years, certainly.
Can I ask you a question? Two hour on the subject, I guess, with the cell phones. So it's my understanding the guys pay ten dollars a month towards the, for the cell phone users.
Twenty.
Twenty, right, ten paper, but and the village picks up the rest. And they can use that in their personal time or whatever. Couldn't that, couldn't all your personal stuff be foiled though? Since the village and its its public funds paying for it?
It's a public phone, right.
Well, it's on your, your off time for texting or whatever.
Are you asking if the bill, are you asking if the bill record could be foiled? Yeah, because that's already in the address.
No, kind of, no, kind of thing on the phone. You know what I mean, like texts, emails, anything like that. I mean, it's personal use, but it's also.
That is a municipality phone.
Right.
This is in the county municipalities.
Fascinating question. My, my immediate guess is probably not, but maybe. I don't know the exact answer to that. If the board wants me to research the question.
No, I just, don't make me know. I'm just curious, but.
I wouldn't think you could, because, I mean, they contribute.
Touches into telecommunications privacy and cellular issues, though, so that's not a small question.
And my reports on the phone, all that kind of stuff, or whatever, for water and so on and so forth. Pretty sure the union could, would probably, would stop that, wouldn't they, or no?
I, I don't.
Or you're just leaving your phone.
I don't think the union would have anything to say about it.
I don't know.
It's not really an option, honestly. Leave, just leave the phone.
I'm just.
Or use it only for work purposes, is what I'm saying. I don't know. It's just a, I'm not making an issue about it. I'm just, I'm asking.
I would think that they couldn't, just for sure fact, I mean, they contribute and then the village covers the rest essentially, which is their own call twenty-four seven, so when you know, thirty different where they are, whatever.
Jase, when you brought that up before, did we look in the union contract? Was there verbiage that said they could use it for?
I'm sorry.
The telephone? Was there verbiage in the union agreement that said they could use it for personal? Would you want me to? Do you want me to go?
No.
No, no, no.
I, I believe you're right, I'm just curious. But I don't know if the union will be able to say anything if if the village wanted to do something with that phone as far as. But I don't know about the foil. The foil would be an outside source.
Foil is all about whether or not it's a public record. A private employee's communication using a public device is not a public use, nor is it a public record itself, because it's not about something that was done for the public. My general sense of the answer is no, but again, if you want me to research it, I can.
No.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I, I thought it didn't work.
I was just curious.
No, no, that's fine.
And what is the, what is the clothing allowance?
Two hundred dollars?
It's listed as two hundred right now, but that's clothing and safety equipment, so it's, I I believe it's written as clothing and boots and safety equipment.
Well, you better, you better check that, because I know, like, somebody just got a pair of boots. So you're telling me that they don't get a clothing allowance? See, ours is separate.
It's one. One month or whatever you think. It's at your discussion. If you choose to spend it all in boots or t-shirts or whatever, that's how you spend it.
Well, but like a pair of boots that you just bought, what do they caution?
More than that.
Which, I, which, here's another thing I wanna, I meant to bring this up while John was here. Can I use you for an example? He went online and bought his boots. Now, if his are like the ones, I looked at the brand, if they're like the ones I got, I think we would be better served talking to, like, blue collar down the land, having, having them bring the boot truck right here. Then these guys ain't gonna go anywhere. They ain't gotta, they ain't gotta come up with the money. They ain't gonna pay for it on a credit card. All they do is they go in, pick a pair of boots, and blue collar asks us to.
That's.
Cause you haven't paid the tax.
Yeah, but, see, here's, here's where that comes in.
Which you should have, if it was blue collar, he would have a form.
You're right.
But he wouldn't have to pay tax, because it's a municipality.
Right, but that, that choice by that particular pair of boots and pay tax on it was mine because I wanted
upset boots to match certain criteria for myself. Blue collar doesn't have them.
Maybe they could have ordered them.
Ordered them, whatever. I didn't look into it.
Well, I'd still like to see a blue collar bring a truck, yeah, for the guys.
Are they gonna pay more, though?
You know, they're that.
There are appearances throughout the year, like now quarterly, um, in order to comply with EPA standard three thirty-four, which has to do with our chlorine calibration of that equipment. I have things calibrated in only, so quarterly, we already have a clause to be in only.
Oh, can I say?
So, you know, I've not seen any charge associated with having a boot truck come, but if we're already gonna be there, you know, it's, it's not a huge deal.
The reason I was saying have them come here is because if they come here, then you don't have to pay a dime. Other, unless it's over your allowance.
Right, well, I didn't, personally speaking, I didn't have to, but I chose to, because I, I live after a certain profit. You know, and I know Toad's the same way. He, he buys his boots from wherever he gives you a receipt.
Correct.
And that's, yeah, I think John typically does go through the blue collar, or we have accounts with one or two of his. But I get what you're saying.
I just think it'd be more easy on you guys as far as having to put your own money out for something that we're buying for you.
They choose to do so, I mean, then that's their thing.
I mean, I don't, right, but I, I don't know if blue collar would charge anything for it.
It's for the phone call.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's for, all right, so the union agreement is for, they're staying for five years. Three percent increase each year. Uh, no increase in phone contributions, no increase in medical contributions. Clothing is a hundred dollars, or is ten dollar increase each year. Those are all five, right?
Are you asking me if the board wants to accept it?
Well, no, that's all five, everything that's listed in the.
Yes.
And what is the old one? Is it three?
Yeah, it is three.
Yes, that's typical for a contract. Three, maybe four. Five, you, you don't usually do five.
And I'm like, you mean, two, maybe three, some type of issue, two?
Does it matter if it's five or three, really?
Uh, it, it works both ways. If it's a good contract for the worker, well, yeah, you, they'd want five years. If it's a good contract for the village, well, yeah, but if it's a bad one, you're gonna wanna go short, so you can, you know what I mean?
I got you.
Three years is more.
Flexible.
Yeah.
Can I ask a really crazy question? Please?
Yes.
You're talking about contract negotiations and the boards wants, needs, desires, an open public session with one of the members of the group that you're negotiating with, sitting right here. That's just kind of crazy, okay? That's not the way negotiations work.
All right.
Okay. You guys should be talking about this amongst yourselves in executive session.
It's not, it doesn't call for executive session.
Huh?
Doesn't call for executive session.
Okay. I've been through plenty of these. I'm just telling you.
It doesn't.
But you go ahead and do what you want. I'm just telling.
Dad?
I could look into the listing of items in executive session. Uh, it's not specifically about employee termination or. You about to open that to the.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna.
Let me see if it's in the list.
I will say one of my slideers spoke, was at the, she was at the town meeting, and they were negotiating, they were talking about the, uh, the pay bump.
Now, keep in mind, executive session, the things that you're allowed to discuss in executive session, you are not required to discuss in executive session unless you think it'll harm the village. It's just the listing of the things that you could choose to discuss in private. And I'll let you know in just a second if it's in there. A contract negotiation would be.
It is listed as shoe and clothing allowance. It's shoe and clothing allowance, and in, in the paragraph, it says for the purpose of purchasing safety footwear and work clothing.
Collective negotiations pursuant to the Taylor law. Yes, you can discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
If you choose to.
Have you ever done an, an open public session that?
Some.
Okay, thank you. That's all I'm saying. It, it, it's not how you do things. We're learning. I, I'm, I'm trying to help, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. You, you gotta understand the reason, the, the process of negotiations. You know? That's, that's why you have those meetings.
So what are they supposed to? What are they supposed to give back to us?
That's what we need to discuss, so we can go back and essentially sneak up.
Would the board like to save the collective bargaining discussion for later in the meeting and for executive session on that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have anything else for us? And you're in?
The board hasn't asked any additional questions in the last two weeks.
Woo woo. Rose?
Okay. I have the, um, phone and address sheet for, um, for village officials that Board of Elections puts out every year. So he just would go through and, um, either make corrections if they need to be made or, um, initial next to it if it's okay. I distributed the register report. In the general register report, there was one village general deposit that I missed entering, and it was a hundred dollar, um, deposit. I believe it was the twentieth of January, so there should be another hundred dollar deposit. It was a death certificate. I have been in contact with GovPay, um, regarding the credit card option. He recommends one machine each for town and village.
Okay.
And we're still trying to figure out if the best way to split up, because you can designate a button for a tr- a certain transaction, or I believe you can designate the button to go into a certain account. So because we have multiple accounts, um, he's, he just wants to make sure that, that we are, we get something that will suit our needs. Um, I told him that at this point I didn't want to do phone credit card transactions. I wanted people to come in with their card and use their card themselves. Um, I didn't want phone, you know, numbers being, um, try, you know, done over the phone. We don't have to do website credit card sales right now. That's something that we can do down the road. And, um, I'm gonna be talking to Gene to see if he has any thoughts about it that I, we need to take into consideration. Troy, I'm sorry, Troy indicated that they have a new gateway coming that will give us increased reporting options. And so I said, well, it, it doesn't make sense to start something up in the next month or two if in three months you're gonna have a whole new gateway and things are gonna all change. So, um, I, I personally, I just said that I would just assume wait until they've got the new gateway up and running. And then, you know, if the board decides they want to go this route, then we would start at that time.
Well, how difficult would the transition just from one machine to a new machine? Cause they'd replace the machine for free, right?
Right. I don't know what training would be involved. It just seemed silly to start something and then have, have it change. So.
Cause how long would it take for them to start it up? Like, we were saying, we want this.
It, it sounded pretty, you know, I, I don't wanna say instantaneous, but I mean, it, it didn't sound like there was any kind of a waiting period or it was a huge, long, involved process. So I'm, I'm thinking when we tell him that we're ready to go, that they can get us up and running, I would think. I would think relatively soon. I don't have an exact answer for you.
Well, I'm just, because of, I mean, his water bills are coming up in next month.
Right.
And if people aren't able to pay by the car, I think, I'd just really like to see if it does make a, a huge impact and if it is a huge power for.
Mm-hmm. I guess I was thinking that we would start maybe with fiscal year.
Is this, I, I might have missed this. Am I correct?
Credit card.
You're right, this isn't costing us anything, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. The, there's a fee that's added on and the person using their card that gets added to their total of their bill. We don't pay for the equipment. We don't pay for reporting. We don't pay anything.
Cause the fee that they have to pay, I assume that's where the credit card company gets their money?
Yeah.
Right? So what do you guys think? Should we just hold off, like Rose said, to?
Yeah, I figure out a new one's coming out pretty quick. I, I'd rather wait and get the latest and greatest.
Did they say when the next, next expected?
Um, he thought two to three months.
Okay, yeah, we should just wait it out.
And I think, I think that's it.
As long as we're on Rose, um, I talked to Dan the other day about this and, uh, and talking to Rose, um, I think it'd be better to go back to the whole way we're doing the billing as far as, the termination notices. If somebody's got a past due balance versus somebody that doesn't have a past due balance, um, when their current bill is due, the one with no balance is getting termination the same as the one that has a previous balance. Now, this is adding more to the list termination notices, uh, putting more work on Rose, which she don't want it to look like she don't wanna do her job, but, I mean, if you compare the money we're getting to the. If you compare the money we're getting to the money we're spending. Is it making that big of a difference, Rose?
I haven't seen a huge difference in collections with the termination that we did, um, after the September bill. We did that in November and that kinda carried over with the multiple payments into December and January. Um, I do have termination notices ready to send out to the people that have previous balances in addition to their current bill. Um, I've got those ready, if, if the board decides they want everyone to get the termination notices, then I only have to go back and do. Maybe not even half of them. Um, it hasn't made a difference hugely, it's hard to track the successive payments. Um, and that means that the DPW also has to stop whatever they're doing in order to go back and do terminations. Every month instead of just once a quarter.
Well, that was gonna be my question, second, that sounds stupid, but if we're doing terminations, not that a lot of people get the water shut off, but. You know, what do they have a pass? Why are we sending out termination letters if we're not terminating service?
Exactly.
You know what I mean?
Right, and I.
Sending out more letters, don't?
If, if they've got a past due balance.
Right.
They should be getting a termination notice, but why are we terminating or sending a termination notice to somebody that doesn't have a past due balance? They only owe their current bill is what I'm saying. Do you see what I'm getting at?
My understanding was once we went past that due date, then they're considered past due.
Alright.
With the new law. Which would mean that even the current, current bills would be past due at that point and would require a termination notice.
This is sort of like your taxes, we just had our taxes come in, you didn't pay by the end of, uh, January. And according to the taxes that I got, then there's tacked down the interest on.
Uh huh.
Right.
So.
Right.
Uh, I'd assume that what we're trying to do is clean up an old problem and I think if we keep on vacillating here, we're, we're not going to. Address the real issue, which is we're trying to get people to come back online, so we're not borrowing money from a general firm and such to carry. And we've gotta do it, I mean, it's like setting a broken arm here, guys, you gotta set it.
I agree, that's how it stated in the law then, in the water law, so I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I'd say, why, why aren't we terminated? Then you wouldn't get, you wouldn't be sending out a termination letter to somebody that already has their service terminated.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right, once they're terminated, then I, I don't send the termination, I just send the regular bill.
Right.
There are some people, from my understanding, there are people that can't be terminated.
How do you mean?
That they, they can't find the service or the shut off or.
I was hoping that that's what you meant, not that legally they can't be terminated.
Those are the ones that they get the visual penalty on, right?
Am I, we can't terminate, uh. We can't terminate, um, apartments either, can we?
That's my understanding.
Jane?
Uh, as to whether or not you can terminate some, some resident in an apartment?
Tenants.
That does not match my understanding, no. See, three people nodding yes, I actually believe that you can. The question is whether or not you've provided notice to the landowners, what's that?
And if they're on separate meters.
Yeah, if they're on separate meters, if it's like a whole apartment building, yeah, you're gonna have a problem there. But that's a question as to whether or not the person that has the water service, the, the owner of the building is gonna be responsible for paying it. If there's one meter, the building owner's responsible for making sure that the bill gets paid. And if the water gets shut off, it's the landlord's responsibility to the tenant, not the villagers.
Right.
So, yeah, if the, if it's an apartment, an apartment building and they're paying, you shut the building off and let the landlord deal with it because it's their job.
Yeah, so then we need to be going through and carrying through with those shut offs or with the terminations.
And that would match what the language of the new adopted water law says.
Yes.
Which, while I was dithering around on my phone, I was bringing up a copy of the new water law to bring up the exact termination notice language. Wasn't trying to look rude, I apologize.
So then you need to send out those notices?
Yep, I will send them out tomorrow morning.
Now, if the, if the board does choose to change what the, the notice portion is, you can do that, but because it's currently in the water law, you'd have to modify that with a law. Which requires the notice requirements, the commentary requirements.
So you have to have a hearing as well?
Exactly.
Well, we have it set up so that, again, like Rick said, we can get the money in so that we're not borrowing from general or contingency, so that staying in water's water essentially.
What's the dollar, Danny?
Um, right now, the total due is twenty-five thousand one forty-nine.
That's outstanding?
Uh huh.
For some villages, that's quite significant.
That's huge.
It's, it's no different now than what it was the old ways, what I'm getting at, though.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is we haven't gone through cycles enough, on this next cycle, I think you're gonna find that things are gonna tighten up. Because we're gonna fulfill what we said we're gonna do.
If I, if we're betting, I agree with Rick.
And, uh, and unfortunately, like I say, it's not fun, but we gotta set a broken arm here, we gotta straighten out the system. There's, there's a whole series of systems that have been carried out for years and it's a matter of rectifying it.
Cause people get the notice of termination, they're like, who there?
Well, exactly, you know.
You know, so there's no, they don't leave the recourse that's bound, that should have.
I mean, it's a terrible thing, but if you don't start telling people.
It's not that you wanna terminate people.
Right, don't say, oh, if we don't start doing it, then all we can do is just change the terminology that we're supposed to be doing.
Exactly.
And if I could also advise the, the village board. If you go to meetings for other municipalities in the area, the ones that provide water service to people that are outside of their village where they can't put a lien on the property. If you don't do the shut offs, they'll run up bills into the thousands of dollars, and then if you wanna go after it, you have to pay somebody, like a lawyer, to go and get that. And if you're talking a few hundred dollars, it doesn't make sense to do it because it costs too much to hire a lawyer. The shut off, when it's starting to get due, is the best enforcement mechanism to brand there being many thousands of dollars in late bills. It's, it feels a little villainous, but it's a necessary evil.
What, uh, what is recourse when water gets terminated to a house?
What do you mean recourse?
As far as they can't live there with no water, can they?
It brings up a very interesting problem in question. It could technically constitute a public health nuisance that's being created by the village, and if the county health department stepped in, which they very rarely do, what they can. Request or require the village to turn it back on, and then the village needs to go through its code enforcement to make sure there's a condemnation proceeding against the resident. And so you'd have to get Gary Brecker involved, make sure that he's notifying them that they're creating the problem, whoever the resident is, yeah, it's, it becomes a process. And not a fun one.
But that's, it's a process that takes time.
Yes.
I'm gonna tell you that you turn off the person's water, you're gonna loop it and answer real quick.
The last time we went through this.
Pardon?
The last time we went through this and we're doing the shut offs, there was one house in particular locating the curb pods, I've just dug it up, guy comes out of the house. Where do I go to pay my water bill? I tell him, I turned his water out, I waited about five minutes, he came back, Rose called me, I came back on him. Didn't move. You know, it, it.
It does, it does produce results.
At twenty-five thousand dollars, we gotta straighten out the system. It's not fun, these are our, our community members, but we've got to get this back online. And create money so that we can survive. So, it's unfortunate. But we're gonna do it.
So then those terminations are all going out tomorrow then?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's go through correspondence, uh, let's see here, let's go through, we all got the complaint form, uh, from Mr. Finney, Finney, excuse me. Um, that discussed on February fourth at approximately six thirty PM, solicitors made contact, uh, with Mr. Finney, who's why he's selling, uh, carpet cleaning service. The male salesperson was aggressive and pushing their way through the front door, uh, the questions asked by this person were personal about household items. This action made both Mr. and Mrs. Finney very uncomfortable, they felt that this behavior was to look the house over to possibly return. At a later date and time essentially, more than for a robbery. Uh, I sent everybody an email in regards to this, that they did come by and. They did what, they got the permit to sell.
They came in, they got their, um, permit, I get New York State driver's licenses, I get a description of the car and plate number. So that we have some sort of identification for the people that are going around the village. Um, my understanding is that if we don't sell the permits, they can still go door to door?
If we don't have a permit.
If we don't have a permit.
They can go to, they can go to whatever door they want. And we can't do anything about it?
The village does have the power if they want to adopt, and I don't wanna sound like a broken record, adopt a law. General Business Law, section thirty-two and three cover peddler's permits and how they get gift, given out and whether or not they're given to a member of the armed services, which makes them free. That's the second part, thirty-three. But thirty-two says that a village or a town can adopt a law that restricts peddlers and charges fees and ensures. That it's done a certain way and if there are complaints against the enforcement mechanisms, you have that power if you choose to use it.
Now, in regards to the email that Rose sent in regards to that, following up, you know, like Girl Scouts and.
Oh, my, my wishlist for the solicitation law.
So like for all the fundraisers and stuff, obviously if it's.
We don't, we, we've never charged.
For non.
Girl Scouts and schoolchildren and, you know, we don't charge for them to go.
Those are like actual sales.
And for policy purposes, if the board wants to do it that way, that's absolutely allowed, yes.
Rose, when, we have the community picnic and a stand sets up down there, is this part of that same permit?
When, at the community picnic, when what happened?
If a stand sets up and is selling something, do they, does that have anything to do with that?
No, nobody has ever come to get one.
Okay.
Um, they're not going door to door.
Alright.
Um.
Well, I didn't know peddler's permit, I, I.
Right, I, I've only had one person call about putting up a stand that was gonna be in their front yard during the Memorial Day picnic and they wanted to sell food. And I told them that we didn't license something like that, they probably wanna talk to the health department, uh, but that's the only time I've had someone, you know, talk about a booth.
Personally, I hate people coming door to door, I hate, there ain't nothing I hate worse than somebody coming to my door, for example.
My idea is that if we sell the permits, at least we have identification. Um, so if something does happen, we have, we have a way to find, hopefully find them.
The, did anybody read the article in the Ellicottville newspaper about this?
Yeah.
Which apparently they went into allocate the lawsuit, it was Kirby. And, uh, they, they knocked on a couple of the wrong doors and, uh, but anyway. And basically what you have here is an entry situation, that they're not breaking, but they're entering. And, uh, so they ended up, uh, telling the people, telling the people that they didn't have permits and they ended up, uh, confining them, which. They said that they were on a scholarship program with Kirby, well, they contacted, also the, uh, officials contacted Kirby, it wasn't a such program. And, uh, so that was a ruse that they were using. And, uh, so they're sweeping through the area and if they have a, uh, if they meet the wrong people and, and it's uncomfortable. They probably won't be back for a good many years. This particular situation, like I say, is sort of an animal, it's out of the blue and so. I would suggest that on, on something like this, that we, and I had this happen years back with a Kirby dealer, that they came in and exactly. Uh, what they were saying, uh, what you guys saying about people being uncomfortable, and what I did was I just called the police, who showed up. And as soon as that happens, they leave and, uh, and it's the easiest way to get through it and cut through this. And you can give them a permit, but the permit is, okay, that's nice and that's a legal entity, but they're using an approach that they shouldn't be using, the door approach is totally wrong. And what they're doing, and, uh, these are poor quality direct salespeople, there's some great direct salespeople out there that have very good door approaches and, and are very respectful, these people aren't. They're, they're, uh, a bunch of carnies.
Yeah.
As far as I can see, but I, I would say that, uh, on this particular situation, as somebody comes in and say that. It applies for permit that is like Kirby or whatever and say, I think our policy should be this, is that we've had people in the past that, that the population was uncomfortable with. So if we don't have a, a police officer on duty at this time, what we're going to do is call the sheriff's department and ask them if they decide that, just in case anybody feels uncomfortable. And, uh, I'd have to tell you.
What if we raise that permit fee, it's only ten dollars a person? If you raise that thing to fifty dollars a person on a five hundred dollar front, they don't have it, it's gonna discourage them from being in the village.
Yeah, but we also have a direct sales company sitting over in Oley called Cutco. You know?
I'm sorry, I don't, I, I don't care. I don't like people coming to my door selling stuff. With TV and cable guys, they come by, I got a German shepherd, one of them, you can talk to her.
Well, I mean, there's some that don't care for it and some that may be receptive or, I mean, it's just in this instance where these guys are actual, you know. Like Rick said, carnies are not good people, you know, just trying to make a living, I guess you could say. I, I would say the best approach possible could be just. Really work that, like, call the authorities and. Which is what exactly people did.
Yeah, because when they come in and, and such, one of the things is, is that what they discovered over in, uh, Ellicottville, they really couldn't. Find a line real fast to Kirby, you know, or regional office or such.
Right.
And, uh, and I think that that would be one of the things that would initially ask, okay, who is your regional office and what is their telephone number, we need to contact them. And, uh, the other thing is, is you find out if they're members of the Direct Selling Association, which is a, a great organization and. Uh, I was in direct selling for ten years, so I'm just saying that this is a personal, these are very bad people.
Uh huh.
They're, they're not, they're not playing the game well.
Right, I did call and confirm.
They call them that, uh, that should be respectful and they're not being respectful to the public, so what we should do is make it uncomfortable for them. But I think that if we have a permit program and they come in, they apply for the permit, but we want, part of that is, is that we wanna know, we need to talk to your, your headquarters and such. Because like these kids that were over there in Ellicottville, they're really a bunch of loose cambers.
Uh huh, I did confirm that, because they're a distributor, I did confirm that the distributor is with Kirby, they are listed. Um, but they did also. Repeat several times that they're not Kirby employees, they're, they're an independent distributor.
That's one of the Direct Selling Association, is that they want them to be independent contractors, that's what.
Remove all.
Cutco, Lushband or anybody like that.
Yeah.
And so that's what I'm just saying, that, that this is, I, I dealt with Kirby people before and sometimes it's the bottom of the barrel.
Is it possible to have a waiting period between, between them applying and then them getting their permit, so background checks or something could be?
You could structure that in, in the.
That would be a very good way to fill the law, very good way to fill the law.
Or something like a complaint registry, if there have been registered complaints against them and the village keeps a registry, and if any residents put either their name or who they're affiliated with on the list. Then law says the village has the right not to grant you the permit.
And then they wouldn't be allowed to sell in the village?
Right.
Okay.
Well, then it would be loitering and.
I did receive one other complaint, they, the, um, resident was, my understanding is they're gonna be filling out a complaint. Um, but I thought I could take the complaints and attach it to, um, their Kirby's application packet, and then if they came back for another permit. I was gonna see if we could possibly decline it due to their previous history.
You could include that in a petition, yes.
I don't see why you couldn't. I mean, so if we, if Rose rejects that for a valid reason, they can't just go ahead and.
Wait, are you asking if she rejects her right now? Right now, the village doesn't have a peddler's law or anything that grants her the authority to say no. You have to adopt a law that has some uniform standards that are being applied to everybody. Right now, they're getting a permit under General Business Law thirty-two that says you pay ten bucks in a municipality, you get a permit, but the municipality can regulate it. The only ordinance that's on the books in Keteragus is old and was repealed by a later ordinance when it came to regulating any of the peddler's permits. And hawking and selling of wares is the other part they include. You'd have to adopt a peddler's law. And if you wanna do that, you should recommend a, a small committee of the board gets together, perhaps with other people to draft the law. Rose, because she's the one who asked to administer it, probably wanna have a lot of input in that, and then you go through the process to adopt a law. But right now, you can't just direct Rose to start declining those, because they're allowed to get the permit under the law. Under the General Business Law of the state, not under any local law, because there isn't one.
Okay.
The other thing that you can put in there is if they have to be. The other thing that you can put in there is if they have to be referred rather than cold calling, that's another, that's what these people are doing, is cold calls. And uh where the the best program is, is that you can refer it by somebody to somebody else's house.
Okay.
And uh so they, uh that way they've gotta have somebody referring, and so, but right now, this is just a cold call, you know, get out of the car, go up, rip the door open. It's a very bad way to work.
Agreed. Very much so.
So who wants to get on the committee and uh work with Rose in regards to a peddler's law for the village? Okay. Can you guys have something, um list of concerns or whatever, and then um should they draft it to you, Jay, and then you can bring it to the regular board meeting in March, or?
Say that again. I might wanna make sure I'm understanding what it is you're asking.
All right, so Rose and Rick are gonna work on the peddler's law.
Uh huh.
And then for what they feel it should be and whatever they submit, I mean, so then they can, I mean, you guys can probably get something.
Are you asking if they should put everything that they want, their dream list, give it to me, and I make a draft of it?
Yes.
Happy to do that.
Yes. For the next regular meeting in March?
Or however long it takes the committee to decide what they want, and the time that it takes to draft to make sure that there aren't gonna be provisions in it that are illegal or anything like that.
Yes, please.
With the hope that it be done by March?
Just a tentative draft, that's nothing. Thank you, guys. Okay, uh another thing for correspondence we received was from the Cataragus uh Area Historical Society. Writing to all of us stating, we understand that the village has begun budget deliberations and are considering including fines in the uh fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget for furnace replacement in a historical building. This is great news and hope that you will keep this line item in the budget once all other factors are taken into consideration. Since the village owns the building, it would be in the best interest of the board and the residents to maintain the building to keep it functioning. Since the historical society has responsibility for the contents of the building, we are grateful for the village maintenance and uh preservation of the building. Please let us know if you have any questions or need to meet with us at any time. The society board and its members are committed to reviving the museum, making it more functional and vibrant in the village. And sincerely, Eileen Wilson.
Everybody that hasn't been over there should go over and see that they've done a really great job in a bad situation. It's really cleaned up really nice and nicely displayed and such.
Agreed. So, I mean, we'll continue to, I mean, we already have that listed, complimentary in our budget, so obviously they're desperate need of that. Um See correspondence, Cat County Office of the Treasurer for Washington Street, which was that, Rose, you were?
Um that's the partial sharing with the town and the village. We've sent the letter into the county, we haven't received a response back yet.
Okay. Uh Cataragus County FreeGrants.gov, training for municipalities and organizations. Um we learned that's, it doesn't cost anything for the training of this. Now, was this the one geared more towards consolidation services?
Um.
Is that right?
It's by Cat County Economic Development Planning and Tourism. Training will cover how to obtain a Dunne's number, registering with System of Accounts Management, assigning points of contact, authorized organization representative. It's to be eligible to apply for federal grant funding. You must register with Grants.gov, and this is training on how to do that.
Ah, so usually my really utilized your go for grant typically, whether you've been using municipal solutions or anti Alunelo's. But it is free, so if anybody wants to sign up for that course. Good?
You'll all come back, Chief uh Chief Jerry.
All right, uh New York State Teamsters Council Health and Hospital Fund, health insurance premium. Uh Rose, did it list what?
Premium for two thousand sixteen and seventeen.
And Jean has that, correct?
Yes.
Cause he was asking for that, and I know that when, I mean, we asked for that from the job. Next one is Office of the General Services, Federal Surplus Property Program. Is there anything to really comment on that?
Just that our application was approved to be received our Dunne's number.
Yeah.
Um.
Sorry. Why don't you have any sanitizer? No, it's just not, that's all right. Uh next one is Western New York Regional Economic Development Council, invitation to apply for CFA project, uh which at this point in time, I don't see that we have anything to apply for with CFA, cause we haven't even started.
Yeah, but then they have extremely short turnaround, and then like it came, they sent it out at the end of January, we were supposed to reply by the second, third week in February.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
By February nineteenth.
February nineteenth, there you go.
Yeah, what they're doing is just, they're sending it out with the idea that nobody can be able to figure it out.
Is that an assistant that the village would have to pay for, or that the County Economic Development Commission would grant to the village in order to help? Because CFA is the is the funds application. If they're basically offering you a free grant writer, you probably want that.
Sure.
If that's what that is, the CFA assistant.
Well, that's, that's um, what's her name?
Where did she come from?
Uh no, the one that's over the.
Crystal Livers.
Yes.
Oh, Crystal Livers.
Yes. So at any point in time, I mean, as Crystal has said, at any point in time that um any municipalities who need help with grant writing or whichever, to contact her and that. It was a formal welcoming at one of our CCMOA meetings that you guys need help, you know, the county is here to lean on.
Because from the title, that's what it sounds like that was.
Yeah.
It's a company board meeting.
Right. So it's, her, she's just extenuating again, or extending again that, hey, we're here to help, if you need anything. I mean, at some point in time, one thing I'd like to get going would be the old school, but we're not there yet.
I seem to recall there was some discussion, this has gotta be five months ago, four months ago, when you were talking about the school. You'd talked to somebody outside who said, you know, I'll write grants for you, and if you pay me this amount of money, I'll do five grants or something like that. Uh if you have somebody in the county economic development that's willing to do that, maybe you should be going to them with that same speech and say, here, and talk to her about the school.
Yeah. Agreed. Which be working with some next month, maybe, be able to get, start the conversation with her in regards to that. Uh time war expiring agreements, same thing with that.
Have you talked to anybody about the?
No, I haven't, haven't heard back. Haven't heard back.
Well, we have, hear from time to order is what channel you're being dealt with.
Yeah. Uh New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation application is now available. Rose, well, that was for
for seventy five million in water infrastructure.
Yeah, that's what DWSR, which we already have. And then last but not least was Southern Tier West available, building for grant funding. Now that was for uh consolidation and dissolution, is that correct? Did I understand that right?
Um Appalachian Regional Commission's Area Development Program for Projects in two thousand seventeen.
Is that one? Thought that one was primarily for them advising, you know, for funding or whatever in regards to like if somebody applied for dissolution or something. Wasn't that the one?
No, it was a separate one.
So you know what the Southern Tier one was all about?
Southern Tier West was Appalachian Regional Commission for projects starting in two thousand seventeen. Area Development Program.
Do you know what it was specifically designed towards?
That's what I'm looking for.
Cause I thought that was something else, I didn't worry about that one.
Demonstrate positive impacts in the areas of local and regional economic development, community development, education, rural healthcare, workforce development and retention, cultural and asset-based promotion, communications, leadership, and more.
There might be some that we need to look at then. I don't know why. There was one from Southern Tier West though, wasn't there?
That's the one from Southern Tier West.
No, but I thought there was.
There was, there was another one about consolidation, and my apologies, I don't have it on the list.
Okay.
I will look that up and make sure. If you, you got it, right, Dan? You got, I, you've seen it, so that, okay.
I've seen it, you think I can pull it up? No.
That's okay, um.
But yes, that's.
My apologies, I will resend that email out to the board.
Thank you. Oh yeah, here it is, okay. Found it. So for us, it is for Cataragus County, it's February twenty sixth, uh which is a Friday from ten to noon at GCC in Olean. At the Dresser Inn Training Center. If anybody's interested in attending, it's just a two hour little hour, I'll assume. All right, it's before proceeding on to business, it's nine o'clock.
I'm gonna move for it.
Okay.
Do I have a guess and do it?
Do I have a motion then for recess?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a security proof? And it's nine o'clock.
Well, everybody have some refreshments out in the front hall.